Seven oh one.
Yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and start this meeting of the Planning Commission for the city of Forest Grove, Oregon. We'll begin with a call to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Chair Sanderson?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis?
Present.
Commissioner Farrell?
Here.
Commissioner Colbertson? Commissioner Bergdahl?
He's online.
Can you hear us?
Commissioner Bergdahl, can you hear us? Well, let's, can, are we allowed to note for the record that Commissioner Bergdahl is on Zoom?
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
And then Commissioner Stenberg?
Here.
All right, turning to item number B on the agenda, public comment. The public comment period is for non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda may be heard at this time. In the interest of time, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Do we have anyone here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number C on the agenda. It says additions and deletions. Okay, item D on the agenda, public hearing. I will now open the public hearing on file number three one one dash two three dash zero 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 three one dash PLNG. The applicant is requesting Planning Commission approval of design and site development review for a two-story sixteen-room motel building and site improvements at the Holiday Motel, property located at three two two four Pacific Avenue. Tonight's public hearing will be conducted as follows. I will ask Planning Commissioners to disclose any conflicts of interest, bias, or ex-party communications on this matter. I will then ask for the staff report. After the staff report, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their proposal and respond to issues raised by staff and any questions from the Planning Commission. After the applicant's presentation, persons interested in commenting on the proposal will be invited to speak. For persons in the community auditorium, please add your name and address to the appropriate signup sheet. For persons on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. The Planning Commission's decision on the proposal must be based on the relevant review criteria in the city's development code. Staff will summarize the review criteria in their report. Testimony and evidence presented must address the relevant criteria. Failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable a response from the commission, the applicant, or other parties participating in the public hearing precludes an appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. After conclusion of the public testimony, the applicant will have the opportunity to respond to the comments. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow a response from the commission precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Before I ask for the staff report, do any Planning Commission members wish to disclose any conflicts of interest, bias, or ex-party communications pertaining to this proposal? When called on by staff, please indicate the nature and extent of any ex-party contact, bias, or conflict of interest, if any, and indicate for the record whether you intend to participate in this hearing in a fair and impartial manner, or if you wish to abstain from the hearing. Staff, please call the roll.
Chair Sanderson?
None.
Commissioner Ellis?
None.
Commissioner Farrell?
None.
Commissioner Bergdahl? We are having an issue with them hearing us on Zoom. We're working on that, so we can make a note and chat if we'd like, or I'm not sure how that will work, but we'll have to make a note for him. And then Commissioner Stenberg?
None.
Is there anyone in the audience who are on Zoom that would like to challenge a commissioner's impartiality on this matter? Seeing none, I will now ask Senior Planner Dan Yorden to present the staff report. After the staff presentation, Planning Commission members will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions of staff about the review process, review criteria, or staff recommendations. Specific questions from the Planning Commission about the proposal should be directed to the applicant after the applicant has had an opportunity to present their proposal.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson. For the record, Dan Yorden, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. And I have a staff presentation, a PowerPoint, to go over the, generally the proposal, the review process, the applicable criteria, and the staff recommendation. So, Susie, can you? You're working on the sound. Perfect. We'll see if I can. So tonight's staff's presentation will generally introduce the project and provide a bit of background. It'll also describe the review process and applicable review criteria, touch on the proposed proposed conditions of approval. For a detailed list of the conditions of approval and for more information, please refer to the written staff report. I'll also outline the alternatives available to the Planning Commission this evening, and I'll provide staff's recommendations. So, in general, the applicant's request is the owner of the Holiday Motel, located at three two two four Pacific Avenue. He seeks Planning Commission approval to construct a new two-story sixteen-room motel. Currently, there are two single-story motel buildings comprising a total of fourteen. The owner is also requesting Planning Commission approval of site improvements, including new landscaping, an open space area with a bench, and a parking lot. This slide shows generally where the site is located. It's located south of Pacific Avenue and just east of adjacent to the Jacknabock Restaurant site on the west, the Erica's Best Hotel to the east. The site is just about thirty-one thousand square feet, or about point seven acres. As you can see, most of the development on the site is on the eastern portion of the the western portion, which is the location for the proposed new two-story building, is currently asphalt. This slide just shows a view from the street, showing the configuration of the property. One thing I'd like to point out is the telephone booth, which will be going away as part of this project, but it is a historic relic at this point. So, the approval of the project requires designer view, and the reason Planning Commission is considering this proposal is that the applicant's requiring some departures or deviations from certain clear and objective development standards in the city's support. If there's discretion involved, the project has to be reviewed or approved by the Planning. Coupled with the designer view application is site development plan approval, and that just looks at basically the layout of the site, whether or not the building setback requirements are met, the building height requirements. Planning Commission is the final decision-maker on this proposal unless the Planning Commission's decision is appealed. So unlike some of the legislative matters that come before the Planning Commission, Planning Commission this evening is not making a recommendation to the city. The Planning Commission is the decision-maker unless So this slide just shows the proposed site plan. You can see the two existing motel buildings outlined in black on the eastern half of the property and on the south portion of the property. The proposed new motel building is located on the west, about three feet from the property line with the Jacknabock site to the west. You can see the layout of the building and also the proposed parking for the site. A little bit hard to see from the site plan, but one of the reasons why the applicant's looking at a two-story building instead of a one-story building is to allow for better traffic circulation on the property, more importantly, to provide better emergency access. And so there's a hammerhead that you can see between the new building area to the south. That would allow for maneuvering large vehicles, vehicles in particular. And there's also a forty-foot truck loading area near the dumpster, which is on the far south end of the property to where the trash collection area is. This layout allows for better maneuverability for the trash collection vehicles. So generally, this layout improves the traffic flow, the circulation on the property. I do want to point out there would be one way in and one way out. The exit would be on the eastern portion of the property. It'd be one-way through the site. The entrance would be at the current curb cut, driveway access towards the west side of the property. The traffic would be one way in, one way out. This is the proposed landscaping plan. Right now, there's some landscaping on the property, primarily north of the existing building along Pacific Avenue. There's some hedges and structure and so forth. This landscaping plan shows additional trees on the property to fund a public right-of-way with Pacific Avenue and also to provide some shade near the parking area as well. There's also additional landscaping proposed towards the south end of the site at the far southwest corner of the property. That's where the open space area would be with the bench. It'd be landscaped. These are the proposed building elevations. Given that this is a motel building, I don't think this is any surprise of what it might look like. This shows the, the top image shows the building as it would face the parking area. Image at the bottom would be facing the Jacknabock site. Right now, it's a relatively blank facade. The applicant is proposing to help soften the impact of the length of the building. It's about a hundred and twenty feet. Their proposal is to include some color variations, so you can see the dark and the light area. It'd be dark gray, light gray. By a little visual interest, I know the applicant is open to providing some more architectural features to further help soften that impact when the applicant speaks to them. One thing to point out is that there are no required building setbacks in property lines in the community. However, the applicant is proposing to site the building three feet off the property line between motel site and that's allowed, but it doesn't provide a lot of room for landscaping. And also, it doesn't allow for any architectural features to really extend into that side here. Three foot. There's a building code requirement for required right-of-way. There are reasons why there isn't much Again, it's placed in this location to provide for the These are the proposed building elevations on the north side and the south side. I believe the southern elevation would have some window openings, as shown on the diagram. The north elevation would face Pacific Avenue. It's more of a blank wall. Again, color variation is proposed to help soften that impact. One condition of approval that staff has is to add the building address on the north elevation side, which is a requirement of the code, that the address be prominently displayed, but that provide a little bit, might help soften the blank wall. Again, it is a relatively blank So maybe I did worries. So maybe I did something with my Thanks, Susie. So, again, these are the building elevations. The applicant can get into more detail. So shifting away from an overview of the project to the review criteria that apply to this proposal, and this is what the Planning Commission would be evaluating the project again. So the designer view application is based on the following consideration. The development standards of the applicable zoning district and every any overlay district are This particular project is not within any overlay district, but it is subject to the community commercial zoning district. And article, and that's in Article Three of the Development Code. That section of the code deals with things such as building setbacks, lot dimension, building height. The community commercial zone is very flexible. No required minimum building setbacks, as I mentioned. There's no required minimum lot dimension standard. There is a building height maximum of forty-five feet. This building is two stories, so it doesn't need any forty-five feet, over twenty, over twenty feet. The other consideration is that the general development standards in the Development Code, Article Eight, are met. That deals with things such as access to the site, the onsite traffic circulation that I mentioned on the site plan, landscaping requirements, parking lot layout, building So the applicant is seeking some departures from some of the Article Eight standards. That's why we're here this evening. Departures from the strict application of the Development Code standards may be permitted when the following criteria are met. Design guidelines contained in the applicable section of the Design Guideline Handbook are adequately addressed by the applicant. The applicant's statement was provided to the Planning Commission and is part of the written materials, the digital materials for the meeting tonight. And also, a little bit later in the presentation, they lay out what the design guidelines, the applicable design guidelines are. So you can refer to those to make a break for the decision. The other consideration is that the applicant demonstrates that the overall development would result in a development that better meets the intent of the design guidelines than a design that simply meets the code. In terms of considering this criterion, it's really a balancing act to look at how the building is structured versus how the site circulation is provided and how some of the So the design, applicable design guidelines deal with quite a few aspects of the development. One is traffic circulation, another is parking. I'm not going to read the guideline. You have written copy of the presentation that you can refer to if you'd like later in the public hearing, but just for the record, the design guidelines deal with traffic circulation, parking, building orientation, pedestrian environment, screenings of the service areas, so that'd be the trash collection area, landscaping, building design, lighting, and sign. The information submitted by the applicant doesn't really address lighting or signs, but when they do have details for lighting and signs, it'll happen immediately. So for the, that was the designer view criteria for site development review. Planning Commission must evaluate the site development review proposal based on that the applicant demonstrates, again, compliance with the Article Three requirements, except where the Planning Commission approves departures, the general development standards of Article Eight, that the site development plan also addresses site constraints such as natural resource areas, historic resources, pre-protection is I will say that none of those Article Five requirements apply. So there are findings and conclusions also provided to the Planning Commission demonstrating how the applicant's written statement and the proposal does or does not meet the applicable decision criteria. That was provided to the Planning Commission for the meeting this evening. Written staff report also includes the staff's proposed conditions of approval to ensure compliance with the review criteria. And there's a list of the proposed conditions of approval. I wanted to highlight some of the more significant ones. The Planning Commission does have authority to impose reasonable conditions of approval to ensure that the project will conform to the review criteria and to mitigate obstacle project impact. Proposed written conditions of approval are listed in the staff report, but generally, it includes meeting the bill, basically conforming to the site plan. The proposed building shall be setback at least seven and a half feet from the property line. Staff is proposing the elimination of one parking spot adjacent to the public right-of-way, rather than designating that for parking, that it'd be a landscaped area. The building address we posted on the new building facing Pacific Avenue, as I mentioned. The property shall be landscaped as proposed, as shown in the landscape plan. The lighting and signage shall comply with the Development Code requirements at the time that those aspects of the project are reviewed, and that the development comply with other agency standards such as clean water services requirements, stormwater runoff. Understand that the applicant is in agreement with the proposed So in terms of Planning Commission alternatives, Planning Commission can accept the applicant's proposal, including the requested departures from certain development standards, modify the applicant's proposal to ensure compliance with applicable development standards and/or guidelines, request additional information from the applicant, and continue the public hearing to abate certain, or deny the applicant's proposal stating the reasons. So the staff recommendation is that Planning Commission approve the proposed Holiday Motel expansion applications, including the requested development standard departures as indicated on the site plan. And if the Planning Commission adopts the staff report, getting the analysis findings, it's approved. I do want to point out, I kind of glossed over this, that one of the primary departures that the applicant is requesting is that the Development Code requires a ten-foot landscape strip along the public right-of-way. And the primary building structure proposed to be seven and a half feet of public right-of-way. The ten-foot landscape strip requirement is The applicant is still proposing to landscape part of it, but it's not So with that, this concludes the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission might have about the review process, the decision criteria for staff
Thank you.
One question regarding the the seven and a half foot from the main street. What's the existing building? Is it that same distance or?
No, it's further, setback further. I believe it's closer to twenty feet. Yeah, it's further back from the seven and a half. We could go back to the site real quick. We could keep that, leave that up too for the You can see that
Oh yeah, there's two parking spots there.
There are two parking spots there between the, proposed between the building and a hatch area would be the landscape.
So is the seven and a half to the building or to the parking space?
Seven and a half to that black line, the north black line. I believe there's like an electrical utility area that would be between the two-story building.
So the, the parking space that staff is suggesting be eliminated, looks like it's an accessible parking space.
That's right. There, there, it wouldn't affect, there are two ADA spaces that are proposed. There's another space identified as number one. Between the accessible space and the public right-of-way. That and ADA space is kind of where you see, hard to show up on Zoom, but you can kind of see C E L E C. Right next to that, you see the number one.
Okay. That's the space, and then the two that have the little ADA marker on it would remain accessible. Okay.
The site is a little under parked based on the number of units. However, under the current planning rules, because of changes to the state law, there's no required off-street mandate of off-street parking. So it's, it's just shy of one space per room.
And there are no design criteria that would prevent or require something more than that really blank west wall?
Well, the, the design guidelines recommend that, encourage that, have window openings facing the public right-of-way. The design guidelines for the commercial, community commercial zone are really focused more on retail space. So there are things to encourage, like weather protection on entryways. That is one of the considerations. I think it would be preferable, if at all possible, to lift the facade where you had the window openings on the north elevation instead of the south elevation, but I don't
Are there any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you.
You mentioned the telephone booth. Were you going to say anything more about that? The phone booth?
Phone booth, no. It's, it's proposed to go away. It's not a designated historic resource, although it probably should be.
All right. Well, thank you. I will now invite the applicant forward to present their proposal. And please state your name and address for the record.
I'm in and I remember going, I remember making phone calls and did, so I'm a relic, but yeah, you could keep that known this one. Anyway, so I am a senior planner, small engineering firm. I'd like to talk a couple of minutes. I'm going to answer your questions. Well, I'm going to talk about how we got to this point. So we, we had a slightly different plan that we took to meeting with staff in May. And Dave Neimeyer made it look clear to us that he requires turnaround. So that's how we ended up with, he was okay with site less than twenty feet for one-way aisle to the back, but he did want to camp. So that's, that's how we ended up with this plan. We pushed the building really as far west as we could. Technically, we go to zero. It's difficult to, to have a zero lot line, however. But we were able to put a hammerhead in, in there, so a fire truck or any big vehicle wouldn't have to back out on Pacific. He encouraged us to go two stories, all staff did. So that's how we ended up with it. Dimensions are really minimum for a motel. And we, you know, wanted to get as many parking spaces as possible. We were in agreement with the loss of space one. Understand that position. It will be landscaped with another tree. And it will have twenty-seven, thirty, thirty. I do want to make one correction for what Ann said. The, the elevation, can we go to the elevation? Our next one. So that one that says south elevation is actually, it's actually looking south. So those, so this is, if you're, if you're standing on the sidewalk on Pacific, you're looking at the two windows. So it's kind of reversed of what we're saying. The one that says north elevation, it's looking north. So that's from the bench that you're sitting at in the back. So that's what the view is. So if we can go to the other elevation. So we have to talk. By the way, behind me is the owner, the By the way, behind me is the owner, the builder and the building designer. So we talked about some options for providing some variety and interest to that facade. One thing that we discussed was columns every twenty to twenty-five feet. With, so we have vertical columns and then we have the horizontal, the vertical column would be painted a third color. So that's one consideration. We, we propose to just work it out with staff, but we would, you know, we're agreeable to some kind of improving the facade. We can't provide windows because it's firewall. So we really don't want to change the roof line. We, we, we believe the roof line does meet the requirement of its, of a hundred feet. Whole building's a hundred and twenty feet. So we have, it has, it is broken. So and then it, we, we have two colors, but we'll do a third accent. If we can go back to the landscape. So the, the question about the setback. We could put it in, but our concern is that it would create a more of a pinch point for the, for the hammerhead. That is a twenty-four foot backout for those, for those four parking spaces there. But the twenty-foot hammerhead is, is set by the other building, between the two buildings. So we really can't, if we move the building down that, call it three feet, it would just make kind of a little awkward. So that's why we're proposing. Our dimensions are really, for the building, it really is minimum four feet for a motel. But if the commission believes it should be shifted down another two and a half feet to make it work, it would, we'd have to adjust the landscaping a bit. They're on the north side. That will be landscaping on the north side of the building. The other thing that kind of drove this design was the, obviously we need, we need parking, but it's fewer than one for you. One of the, a design criteria is a wider pathway, blockway to the street. But we're proposing one of the adjustments guidelines we're asking for, the narrower sidewalk, that north-south sidewalk. So we are providing a connection between Pacific and all the way back by the, that bend. It is at minimum four feet. We're providing far more landscaping than there, than there is at this time. Sixteen trees. With the one we're going to be adding. Landscaping percentage exceeds the minimum for the site and for park. That were, oh, one more thing. There was a, Dan mentioned the signage and lighting. So we are not proposing any parking lot lighting. I could say poles, but we are proposing lighting on the buildings that we have lighting course at every door, both building code requirements. But we're also proposing some security lighting on the south side of the existing building, I could say the, yeah, existing building, the west side of the existing building and the south side of the new building. So that area in the back by the trash bench will be lit well as the rest of the building. As far as the signage, there is one sign. It is a full sign. And so we're not proposing any change. No new sign.
Does any, anything else? Do any members of the commission have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have quite a few questions. What is the current booking capacity on average? Are you guys selling out every night?
I think maybe fifty percent during the weekend, maybe eighty percent all the weekend.
Okay, so we don't know if that parking will be that big of an issue. Okay. That's question one. With the color palette, does the new building structure match the old structures that are currently there in, in design, architectural design and color?
And if you, if you come up and speak, if you could give your name and address just for the record.
Thank you.
So they proposed to do some, to match the coloring with the existing buildings. So it's going to be part of this remodeling and renovation. So what, what we have in the new building will be matched with the existing ones.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And then when it comes to landscaping, I drive by that daily and it is pretty minimal. So it sounds like this is quite an improvement. Okay. Personally, I would like the ten-foot strip. I know that puts a little bit of a challenge, but when you said Dave Niemeyer, are you referring to the fire department? Maybe that's a little more important than.
For the record, Dave Niemeyer is the city fire marshal.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Are, are the owners, have you owned it for a while or are you new owners? Okay. Well, I, I really appreciated it when you did the new paint job a few years ago. I really thought it improved the look of the property and that area of town. I am worried about the big wall because at least for me, if you live on the west part of town, you're just going to drive by it like five times. And it's just going to be the Jack in the Box dumpster or whatever and, and that wall. And so I just would really like to see some, something creative to make it have, because the cute side is going to be on the side you don't see as much, you know, and, and I understand the reasons why, but just encourage you to do something to lessen the impact of, of that big wall. We've seen a lot of, you know, creative murals and other things in Forest Grove that I think have improved the overall look of the town. And I think you have an opportunity here. And you've already shown us you can make it look better. So. Any other questions?
No, Nicole, I'm half the couple that I had. Commissioner Birdall on Zoom. I don't know if you can hear us now, but do you have any questions? Are you asking what year it was built? Okay.
They're, they've told me it's sixties maybe. Yeah. Yeah. And the, and actually I learned from Dan's report that, that this was actually proposed this addition similar, maybe. So it's been there a long time. The two driveways have been there decade, decade. So time for remodel. I can't speak to that. Okay.
I can't hear. Yeah. So I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Birdall, we're having just a little bit, the volume's a little low here in the auditorium. So he's saying, you know, it's a mid-century modern building, which is interesting. Are there any architectural elements from the original building that you're planning on implementing in the new addition to kind of make it cohesive?
Yeah, we, we tried too much with the existing ones besides covering. And even the new one, we tried, let's make it a way off the existing. Unless we have to do something worse. So we tried to make it as close as possible in the looks of the building.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Birdall? Okay. Any, any follow-up questions?
Chair Sanderson, one, one of the, under the building design guidelines, these are recommended things that are in the design handbook, but one is to encourage design which provides visual linkages between proposed developments and adjoining existing buildings. So if there is something to, it's really getting at trying to integrate and make it a cohesive whole.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? All right. Thank you. I will now call on persons that would like to comment on the proposal. Please come forward when your name is called or raise your hand on Zoom to be recognized. Please state your name and address for the record and limit your comment to three minutes. Is there anyone signed up wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none here or on Zoom, is there any, oh, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone signed up to speak in opposition to the proposal? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Is there anyone signed up that would like to provide neutral testimony? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to provide neutral testimony? Well, I think we've established only the applicant and members of the commission are here and staff. Since we had no testimony, I'm assuming the applicant does not want to provide a rebuttal to anything. Okay. If there are no further questions, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. Now that the public hearing is closed, is there a motion from the planning commission on the proposal for deliberation?
I'll go for it. My name's Nicole Ellis and I move that the planning commission approve the proposed holiday motel expansion and site improvements. File number three one one dash two three dash zero 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 three one dash PLNG. And that the planning commission adopt the staff report dated July, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, including the analysis findings and conditions of the approval recommended by staff.
Is there a second on the motion?
I second the motion.
Chair Sanderson, just for the record, for clarification, the applicant has proposed to adding a third accent color into providing, looking at ways to provide more architectural definition on that western blink wall. I assume that your motion incorporates those additions to the staff recommendation.
Indeed.
And Commissioner Stenberg seconded it. Do any members of the commission wish to speak to the motion?
I'll speak and say that, like Commissioner Ellis had brought up, I prefer the larger setback from the sidewalk. However, I think that the more important thing than an additional two and a half feet there is probably the ability for emergency vehicles to turn around in the, in the hammerhead. So I think I'm at least willing to give that up.
I agree too. Yeah.
I think that's agreed. Any other comments to the motion?
No.
All right. I will now ask for a roll call vote on the motion. Staff, please call the roll. Commissioner Ellis?
Approved.
Commissioner Farrell?
Approved.
Commissioner Bergdahl? Commissioner Stenberg?
Approved.
And Chair Sanderson? Approved. All right. The motion passes on a five to zero vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing it. Okay. We have a work session on the agenda. Do we have a work?
I think that's just a placeholder. Yeah, we don't have anything for, unless.
This might have been the one I printed off from online myself. We'll see. Turning to the business meeting, do we have a director's report?
Well, I think Brian's on the Zoom call if he can hear us.
Oh, he dropped off a little, a little while ago.
So we don't, I guess I'll give the director report in Brian's absence. We don't have anything scheduled for a, I guess it'd be February twentieth to Tuesday because Monday is a holiday. We don't have anything scheduled for a meeting in February and there's really nothing imminent at this point. So we don't have any meeting dates scheduled. In terms of things that are happening, oh, Brian is there. Okay. Go ahead, Brian. I'll turn it over to you.
Can we turn it up? Like I'm having the hardest time hearing.
We've had a lot of things come out of Salem lately about housing production, housing requirements, things like that. And this one might be the most impactful so far. This actually establishes a housing accountability and production office. That would be sort of a hybrid office between Department of Land Conservation Development and the Department of Building Code, Consumer Building Code Services or whatever. It, it expands attorney's fees. You know, we've, we've talked about, you know, for affordable housing, there are attorney's fees provisions where basically if the city denies affordable housing development and it's appealed, they can recover attorney's fees from the city at the Luba level. This actually expands that to all needed housing, which is an interesting little wrinkle in there. And when we say all needed housing, that means basically at this, at this point in time, that means all housing. That's multifamily, single family, executive level, affordable, whatever it is, that's all housing. There's all kinds of sorts of things about grants and things like that to help, to help developers get lands developed. There are some things in there where we would have to approve certain adjustments. And so I'll harken back to Brown's Farm. For those of you who were on the commission at the time of Brown's Farm coming through, where that had a height adjustment. There's a lot of conversation, a lot of healthy conversation around the merits of a height adjustment. This would basically require cities to approve adjustments to height, adjustments to setback, adjustments to parking within twenty percent usually. And so it's a big, big bill. And so the nice thing about it, there's actually a very nice summary of this bill on the first page of Google, the, the current iteration of it. Now, this is not passed yet. Obviously, this is just sort of being introduced right now. This is the governor's bill. But I want to just draw your attention to it because it's, it's a lot of impact. There's a lot of stuff in here. And I'm probably leaving some things out that Dan and I talked about today. So that's all I wanted to put into my direction report. Again, just a little homework for you. I hope that you guys will feel free to read that, ask any questions, you know, we're still learning it too. So the more questions you ask, the better we understand it. So I welcome any questions you guys have about it.
Brian, did you say fifteen thirty-seven?
Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Well, we also have a new commissioner. Well, it looks like we have two. So Commissioner Birdall, you want to give us a brief introduction to yourself?
Absolutely. Is this loud enough that you can hear me?
Yes, we, we have it. We.
Great.
Fix the volume problems. And by we, I mean wonderful staff.
Excellent. Well, hi, I am Seth. It's lovely to meet you.